Just give a minute or so and then we'll start. Is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution?
Yes.
Yep.
All good.
Okay, I think we have everybody on, some member, the mayor, some department head, we'll go ahead and start. I would like to call the city caucus meeting to order for Monday, March 30th, 2020. We have 15 items for original consideration. If the clerk can read item number one.
Item number one for original consideration. A resolution amending and adopting the City of Schenectady procurement policy effective January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2021. Roll call.
This is. Roll call. Okay. Item number two, if the clerk can read.
Item number two for original consideration. A resolution adopting section three, contract.
Miss Michael, we're having a bad feedback from your end. We're not able to hear your.
Mr. President, may I request that everyone mute their phones that are not speaking at the time? It really makes a big difference.
If you don't mind, and if you have a roll call item, we can just, you can just unmute and then call it in or text me. Please mute your connection. Miss Michael, can you please repeat item number two?
Item number two for original consideration. A resolution adopting section three, contracting policy and procedures.
Has joined the meeting.
Discussing committee without objection, on consent.
A participant has joined the meeting.
Item number three, if the clerk can read.
Item number three for original consideration. Resolution authorizing the equipment agreement with General Electric Company.
Discussing committee without objection and consent. Item number four, if the clerk can read.
Item number four for original consideration. Resolution authorizing the sale of.
That's Larry, lost your connection there. Miss Michael, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
No, we're not hearing you all the time. Can you please repeat the last item that you were reading?
Item number four for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 19 Close Street.
Discussing committees without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 34 Henry Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 66 Linden Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 111 Edward Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number eight, if the clerk can please read.
Has joined the meeting.
Item number eight for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 414 Schenectady Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 417 Second Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 525 Lang Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 919 Delamont Avenue.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 12, if the clerk can please read.
Item number 12 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 1064 Hegeman Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item number 13, if the clerk can read.
Item number 13 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 652 to 208 Front Street. LLC for a sign that overhangs the city's right of way at 208 Front Street.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Item. Number 14. This will be approved this evening and presented on a later date. If the clerk can read.
Item number 14 for original consideration. A resolution recognizing April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Discussing committee without objection on consent. Under contract and supply, we have one item. If the clerk can please read item 15.
Item number 15. Under contract and supply, a resolution awarding the bid and awarding the contract for phase two of the improvements to A Diamond to Carver Construction Incorporated for the amount of $412,250.
May I ask, is 424,250 dollars or not 412?
I have. Hold on, let me check. It's 424,250 dollars.
Thank you. If there's nothing else more to come before the city council, city council caucus, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by.
So moved by Lisa.
Second by.
Carmel. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. I would like to call the city council meeting to order for Monday, March 30th, 2020. And since we are doing these meetings via teleconference, we opted to not have the invocation and the pledge. I would ask the clerk for the approval of, sorry, approval for minutes from March 9th, 2020. May I have a motion?
So moved, it's Karen ZW.
Second by.
I'll second again, it's Carmel.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I would like to ask the clerk, communication of petitions.
Communications presented to the city council for Monday, March 30th, 2020. Under official, there were none. Under general, there were none. And under petitions, there were none.
Thank you. I just missed one item. Can you please do the roll call?
Mr. Kozier? Are they muted?
Judge, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Porterfield.
Here, can you hear me?
A participant has left the meeting.
Ms. Zuluski Walzunis?
Here.
Ms. Perazzo?
Present.
Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Palomini?
Here.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Present.
Okay.
Thank you. I would like to call on my colleagues for committee report. Any committee reports?
Has left the meeting.
Thank you. Moving on, privilege of the floor related to legislative agenda, since this is a teleconference, I would like to ask the public to please submit their comments to our city clerks for consideration and to be added to the minutes. Approval of the legislative consent agenda, can I have a motion?
So moved. I'll move.
I'll second. Karen.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
We have, what about the items for roll call?
Yes, I am getting to that.
Coming up.
We have one item for roll call. And if the clerk can please read item number one.
Item number one for original consideration. A resolution amending and adopting the City of Schenectady's procurement policy effective January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2021.
May I have a motion?
Ed Kozier, I'll move.
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? Clerk, can you please tell the rules?
Mr. Kozier?
Yes.
Ms. Porterfield?
I'd like to explain my vote. So first of all, this is a purchasing policy for the entire city and all the members of the city council should have been included in crafting the language and providing feedback. The last time I saw this people legislation was on March 9th, when Council President Mutiveren pulled it from the agenda. It had passed out of committee on March 2nd. And I found out on March 9th that Mrs. Walzunis said he was pulling it to bring it back to committees so we could hear from other entities that wanted to help, which made them. Specifically, he said, and I quote, "The majority of the council members required that the procurement policy be held for another cycle to further discussion to allow presentation from our local union bodies. Mr. Gardner withheld information from us which we need to hear before moving forward. I have the right to facilitate this request and make everyone, make sure, make sure everyone is given the opportunity needed. If there was further discussion after that, I'm not aware of that, I was never made aware of or invited to any meetings to discuss any potential changes to the procurement policy and nor did I receive any recommended changes. We received our council package on March 20th. And in that package was the original legislation that had been pulled from the agenda, which is what I was prepared to vote on after reviewing it over the weekend, confirming it went past out of committee. Since I received no further correspondence that changes had been made. Approximately one hour before the committee meeting, I received the redlined copy of the policies which changes made that did not include any discussion or input from myself and as I understand it, a couple other council members. So when this legislation was originally discussed, we also included the fact that we were going to make a certain amount and then increase that amount next year. None of that was in this legislation as it was presented redlined on this past Monday. The language, that language was totally removed. And apparently it was done with, with only input from certain council members, I was not included on that. And even as we have a difference of opinion, I think that all council members should still be included on the discussion and not just of folks who will agree to what's being said. We're all duly elected people here and we should all have an opportunity to discuss and to make our position clear. And I know that it was brought to the committee an hour before, but that is generally not how it's done. There's discussion had and then it's when the changes are made, then it's brought to the committee. That's not what happened here. This process was flawed, in my opinion, and I really also feel that it was a flagrant abuse of power to not include other council members. So with that, I vote no.
Okay, Ms. Zuluski Walzunis?
I vote yes. I support Mr. Gardner and what he's trying to get accomplished here. And I vote yes.
Okay, Ms. Perazzo?
I certainly agree with what Mr. Porterfield has had to say about this process. Given the fact that I was out of country made a difference on my ability to have input, but you know, again, it seems like there wasn't a lot of transparencies in this. There wasn't a lot of information offered in advance for consideration or input from all the council members. And I really struggled with that. Where we got to, I understand all sides were pleased with and so it's reasonable at best outcome. But I really would like to see more open conversations about these things in the future. We, it seems like we're becoming less and less transparent all the time and as a fully democratic council, I think it's something we need to be very cognizant of. That being said, I do vote yes for the roll call.
Ms. Patrick?
Yes, I want to first say that in meeting with Mr. Gardner, I feel really confident about everything that he has planned to really make sure that we're going to be able to benefit as many local small businesses as we can and get many more certified as minority and women about business owned enterprises. And so I vote yes.
Mr. Palomini?
The main piece of this legislation is actually tied with the section three component and honestly, the amount of money that we put in here to some extent wouldn't matter without the enforcement piece that's included in the section three. And that's really the piece that's very, very important to making sure that the small businesses and local businesses have an opportunity to participate and get these contracts. Mr. Gardner put together, I think, in the end is a very solid piece. Everybody had their opportunities to communicate this and their discussion in the committee meetings. And with that, I vote yes.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Yeah, let me just address Ms. Porterfield's comment. Mr. Gardner has worked diligently on this document and it is my understanding through Mr. Gardner that he have reached out to council member. He was working very hard to get the document, to revise it and to resubmit to the council based on the discussion that Mr. Gardner was having with council member and the administration and union officials. So it's the understanding that they were open communication via Mr. Gardner. And we took it upon that, that he is the one who is driving this policy and to make this amendment and to work with everyone at the same time so that it can be truthful on his side. I want to take this opportunity to commend him for his diligence and to work on his document to reach, you know, we can move forward with the document. There is nothing that anyone that was hiding from anybody, it was open process. Everyone was involved, Ms. Porterfield was involved, Mr. Gardner was in communication with Ms. Porterfield on this document and the section three document also. You know, it's a process, we were back and forth trying to get something that we can pass that is workable and that can give Mr. Gardner the opportunity that he needed to do his work more efficiently. I vote yes.
Item number one passes with six votes yes and one no.
Thank you. The next item is privilege of the floor regarding city business. Same again here, I ask the public, please submit your comment or city clerk for it to be added to the minute. Okay, miscellaneous business of the council, my colleagues.
Mr. Mutiveren, may I go first?
Sure.
So first of all, I want to, I want to thank the mayor for his leadership during this very difficult time that we're all facing with the coronavirus. He took some tough measures, closing down the playgrounds at the parks and really, you know, stepping things up and keeping the public well informed. I put him right up there with our governor. The highlight of my day is actually listening to the governor's press conferences. I think he's, I think he's done a fabulous job. Just a reminder, everybody needs to stay home and stay safe. The other thing that we have coming is the census. There's still, you know, while everyone is home and staying safe, this is a good opportunity for everyone to get on and complete the census forms to ensure that we have a good count. I think it's going to be even more difficult because of the fact that we are having this social distancing that people should be able to get on their computers and get themselves counted. And I'm not sure how the summer's going to, what the summer's going to bring as far as us being able to have people out going door to door. I guess we'll just have to stay tuned on that. The other thing is, I want to commend the police, the police officers and their leadership under, under Chief Clifford. They're continuing to do the book reading for the students that they would normally go into school with. They're doing it on Facebook. So I think that's been well received. I've seen a few of them and they're, it's a good way for us to stay connected with the, with the students that are in this new world of learning from home. So I want to, I want to thank you, Mr. Mutiveren, for putting this together. And this has not been an easy, this has been kind of challenging with, with trying to get everybody on their different technology. I think if we all had the same technology, we wouldn't hear as much feedback, but I want to thank my colleagues for really stepping up and, and taking part in this meeting and ensuring that the city is moving forward in a good manner. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, can I, yes, this is Carmel, may I have, may I make some announcements? I just also, thank you. I wanted to add my thanks to Ms. Zuluski Walzunis's. The mayor, the police, the fire have all been, you know, really stepping up to the plate in this crisis and I think to the county for the work that they're doing, especially the food delivery work. I, I give a big shout out to the library staff. We're at the Boys and Girls Club and to the Boys and Girls Club for opening their space to all the, all that is being done there to help those in our community. And I also wanted to just point out that there's so many resources available for parents to use to, you know, having to homeschool their kids and looking for ways to fill up lots of hours every day. So we keep sharing those on Facebook. And there's really some fun stuff for that. There's fun stuff that the library's doing every day, that WMHT has. So I'm thrilled that the youth are going to be able to stay learning and that the families are really having this opportunity to come together and, and communicate with one another in a way that, you know, for a lot of us hasn't been happening for a long time. So I commend everybody for, for doing what they're doing right now. Thanks.
So I just want to also offer, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Ms. Porterfield.
Yes, I just also want to offer my thanks to all the first responders and also a special thanks to those in the medical field, which have the unfortunate circumstances of having to go to the hospital and they are just under some stress there, but doing a really good job and getting people taken care of. And so I think we, you know, I know that we didn't start this meeting with prayer, but all of us definitely offer our prayers for all those first responders and folks out there on the ground all day, every day getting this done. I can't thank them enough. And also, Ms. Zuluski Walzunis talked about the census, but I also want to remind folks that they have pushed the date out. So there will be people, once we're out of the situation, that there will be people going door to door. And also, they're still actually looking for people to apply for jobs. So for those who want to apply now, we have a little bit more time, but they can go ahead and go online and apply. And so once the census takers actually are going door to door, there will be people on the street. But like I said, that's been pushed out until July right now. So and thank you also for trying, for this meeting. Hopefully we will get to the point where we can actually see each other in the meeting. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Mayor?
Hello, appreciate the kind words from the council. Want to thank the public for their cooperation. And again, compliment the great work of the staff, police, fire, codes, our finance office, Bureau of Service picking up garbage. Everybody's doing a great job in difficult times. We put out a notice where we were not going to be able to pick up yard waste. The county compost facility is actually just closed right now to the public. They're going to take municipal waste in. So we're planning to start picking up the yard waste maybe as soon as Wednesday, April 1st, but definitely by Monday, April 6th. So if people will have the opportunity to do some yard work this weekend, of course, make sure you stay six feet away from any of your family members or neighbors. But we will pick that up hopefully starting Wednesday, but definitely on Monday. And we're still going to go through some difficult times ahead of us. This virus is still spreading and so I cannot over emphasize that the best way to avoid it is not to get it to begin with. And to do that, you have to wash your hands, you have to stay in your home, minimize your travel and just be appropriately cautious as we go through this. minimize your travel, and just be appropriately cautious as we go through this. If do that, we're all going to get through this, and again, we'll be a stronger community going forward. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you. Just add my few comments, I just, you know, like my colleagues, just want to commend the first responders and everybody who is on the front line through these difficult times, it is not easy out there, we are seeing, we are hearing the news, and it's not something that any one of us wanted to hear on a daily basis. So I want to thank everyone who's out there providing the necessary service to the people who are affected, and especially the seniors, we know Mister Kozier and the county and a few others are working diligently to provide, from the county side and also from the city side, to provide the necessary resource to our senior and the people who are in need of services. So I want to thank all those who are involved in that process also. And also want to commend Mayor McCarthy for his communication to the resident of Schenectady and to bring the community aware what is going on out there. I want to commend McCarthy and the staff for putting that out there is very good, please continue to do that. Our residents are looking forward for those communications so they can know what is out there and what is going on out there. Thank you all, and thank you everyone for joining the teleconference meeting, I appreciate it. This is the first time we are doing the council meeting through this, and I think we went through pretty well, so I want to thank everyone for that.
Thank you, Mister.
May I have a motion?
Ed Kozier, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone be safe out there.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Marian Porterfield. Has left the meeting.
Ed Kozier.
Has left the meeting, a participant has left the meeting.
Staff.
Has left the meeting.